Put us to record and call the meeting to order at 4:31. Good afternoon, everybody. We just got an email. I believe, Barbara, you said we got something from Matt Starr that said he couldn't attend. I'm just scanning my email.
Because these meetings are being recorded, do we actually have to do minutes?
Um, I believe so, yes.
My, am I doing minutes again?
Um, I'll, so well, the meeting's called to order. And we can certainly, so I'm going to ask for public comment, but since we have no members of the public here, I'm going to move on and we're going to hold off appointing a committee chair until we have the full committee able to meet. But as far as secretary, I think it's fair to share the wealth. So I'm going to ask Patricia or Joe to take minutes for the meeting to give Barbara a break.
Have we heard from Connie? Will Connie be here today?
Oh, shoot. I have not heard from Connie. Hmm. Just want to make sure that. Um. Was she on vacation this week? No, that was the last, the one that I missed. Completely my fault. I just want to make sure that she received it. Um. Yeah, it looks like it. Um, okay, so.
I think at the last meeting, she said she was going to be on the road again, and she would probably call in from her car again. Um. I thought she said something like that at our last meeting.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember back. So we'll, we're going to move forward and because they're recorded, we'll make sure that they get the recordings and then at the next meeting, we'll make sure we leave the chair and secretary on the agenda so that we can address that and get folks appointed.
I can take the minutes for this meeting.
Okay, thanks, Patricia. You're off the hook, Joe. Um, and really, our, our discussion item for today is talking about a needs assessment. So I was doing some digging around and let me find it. And found on the CDC website, a pretty decent sort of strategic planning for, sorry, I have way too many windows open. For, there it is. For doing a needs assessment, I'm just going to share my screen. It's here somewhere. Hopefully, this is the right one. Can you all see my so word document?
Yes.
So this was from a, it was a from a slide deck for a CDC sort of a workshop that, that they offer to do a community needs assessment. So as I was reading this workbook that they published, this sort of spoke to me as where we are right now and might help us sort of figure out the homework items and, and way forward to get.
I think this is perfect.
Yeah.
It's perfect. Yep.
So if we just go through this list, our goals for the need assessment would be, and I'm just thinking out loud, so it's definitely a discussion. Identifying community stakeholders that have a need for these ARPA funds, right? Making, we're making.
Not specific stakeholders, but groups of stakeholders. For starters, right?
I think so. So yeah, stakeholder groups.
Meaning like farmers in the community, retailers in the community, nonprofits in the community, other businesses in the community like accountants or or insurance companies, or you know, that kind of stuff, right?
Um, faith-based organizations, childcare organizations, just sort of hitting those buckets that they talk about in all the webinars and literature that we've been getting.
That makes sense to me.
If we're, if you think of goal setting as, you know, you want really no more than three goals. So it'd be identifying those stakeholder groups. I mean, obviously, where we want to create a bank of questions that would go out in the form of a survey to identify needs in the community. And if I'm not heading in the right direction, shout out.
Um, so your first goal, you're thinking is identifying stakeholders. Second goal would be developing a questionnaire to go out to stakeholders. Is that what you're saying?
I think so. As we think of the goals as the broad, you know, very broad sweeping.
Yeah, then I think the ultimate goal would be to develop a report or a series of recommendations about the needs assessment that is delivered to you, Jean, you, Barbara, and the Board of Selectment. That's probably the ultimate goal is to deliver a report or, you know, recommendations. So whatever steps we need to get there, because the, I don't know, I think of goals as what's the ultimate thing you want to achieve? And we don't want to, our goal is not to decide who to, how to, and who to spend it on. It's just to produce a report for the treasurer, the first selectmen, and the board of selectmen, correct?
Yeah, I think we should probably include Board of Finance with that. Barbara, would you say so? Is that would be appropriate? So Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance? But I think you may have hit on something that maybe we don't have three goals, maybe we have one goal, and that's the goal. And really, identifying stakeholders is more of an objective down further.
It's kind of what I think. The ultimate goal is to get this, get a really good report produced that you guys can work with. That's data-driven.
Joe, go for it. You're on mute.
Okay, there we go. Yeah. Now, my understanding now is that this committee, this ad hoc committee was created to come up with a list of recommendations that we as a committee come up with recommendations as a group to benefit how the money would be spent in Kent according to the guidelines that the Treasury has furnished. Am I correct with that, or am I incorrect?
So to read directly from the charge that we were given. Hopefully, I put it, I did, I put at the bottom of our agenda to conduct a needs assessment to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen on potential uses for the ARPA funds. So our job really is conducting this needs assessment and the result will be this report with recommendations.
So how will we approach this now? Will we kind of brainstorm and throw out our ideas as to how we would recommend some of this funds to be spent? Prepare a list. I read, I think I read something about a list being prepared of a possible organizations. You know, how, how do others feel about this?
So I, I think as far as so the needs assessment is going to be us reaching out to the community to understand what the needs are of the community through a Survey Monkey tool, a paper survey tool. And then we're going to take all that data in and pull together all that data that would then come up with, the end result would be, you know, a report of recommendations based on the needs of the community that would go out to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance for them to make those decisions of how this funding should be spent, spent.
Okay, so at the last meeting, our, our first and only meeting last time, there was mention of this Survey Monkey. Sure. What has been done? What's been the response so far with that? And, you know, in other words, what's going on with that, you know, as of now?
Nothing. That's, that's going to be the, the tool that we use when we send out the survey that we're going, this group is going to put together. We're going to come up with the questions to ask the community of what their, their needs are in order to recover in relation to recovering from COVID in, in the form of questions. And then we'll get that information back. And the committee as a group will go through that data that we collect and come up with that final recommendation report to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. Does that make sense? So Survey Monkey is really just the tool that we will use to ask the questions, but we still need to come up with the questions. And this is what this process is really about.
So, so this committee is relying on a survey to get its end result. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, but we're, the committee is going to put together that survey.
I think, Joe, to address your original question about utilizing recommendations that we may have, that would be good for us to utilize those recommendations to create the questions with. So I was trying to think of a good example and I couldn't come up with one, but let's just say you think that the money should, or a portion of the money should be spent on the local restaurants. So then we could address a specific questionnaire to the local restaurants to find out what happened to them during this pandemic, how it impacted their business negatively or positively, or what needs do they have to implement new processes so that they can move forward financially?
So how, how would that address some of the other categories in that the rescue plan, like for example, the internet access and infrastructure and say conservation water, how, how would that address those matters?
Well, she just was using restaurants as an example. Clearly, you would have to customize the survey or the questions or your approach to different groups based on what issues or businesses they're dealing with. She just used that as a, as one example, but there would be others.
So, um, therefore, from what I'm gathering now is that creating a survey to address a lot of these matters and then submitting it, you know, to the, to the community, that's what this committee is, the goal of this committee? Am I, am I wrong about that?
No, that's not charged. Well, that's the charge is to.
Well, the goal isn't to submit a survey. A goal is to collect enough information so that we can come up with a list of recommendations as to how this money and distribution of this money will best serve our community.
Okay, so now how will, you know, okay, say the survey is, is, is out there. Now, what if you get, say, like 50 different responses of some, you know, being very good or some of them maybe being like on the personal side? How are you going to screen some of these? Say, some responses? In other words, which ones would you decide would have more merit than others?
Well, for transparency and completeness, when you're collecting survey data, we're, fortunately, we have the, the act, the plan, the American Rescue Plan Act and the, the interim final rule, and we have to apply whatever responses we get to those buckets and, and qualifications, if you will, of the plan. So if somebody, let's just say, somebody responded to the survey and the open survey question was, you know, how could, how would you improve your quality of life and respond and recover from the pandemic? What would be the best way that you could do that? And if, let's say, someone submitted to increase my purple teddy bear collection from current 100 to 10,000, there's nowhere in the ARPA Act, in that interim final rule, that addresses or would be appropriate for someone wanting to increase their purple teddy bear collection. So that wouldn't apply. So you couldn't apply that that reasoning or their, their submission. It doesn't check any of the boxes for what ARPA is, what's eligible through ARPA. So that would be data collected. So we had someone respond and someone engage from the community, but there's not eligible expenses or eligible. And there's nothing that would be eligible in the, in the plan.
Yeah, I mean.
I feel like we're getting off topic here. I think we should go with the thing that you've put up on the screen, Jean, and one by one go. We can, when the last bullet is under discussion, selecting a method or tool for conducting the needs assessment, we can talk more about the survey or what activities we might undertake to augment the survey or how we analyze the survey and draw conclusions from it. But I think we should follow the strategy that you have here because I think it's really perfect. And I, I don't want to get too caught up in talking about, wow, what if so-and-so answers in a bad way on the survey? I think this, this way the survey does will deal with that as an automatic thing.
Let me, let me just respond to that. Okay, there are various guidelines that have to be met for these funds. They have to prove that there was a, a, okay, there's an economic shortfall from some of these things. So it's, it's very important to keep that in mind.
That's the, we know that, we know that.
We have this one. You know that, absolutely. Now, it also says on this screenshot, a timeline. Now, rather than get, you know, stuck down in the weeds, there is a timeline that's also involved with the assessment. And we also have to bear that in mind also.
Yes, for sure. So if we go to the next bullet defining how the data collected will be used, so their examples are to influence policymakers, to support new programs, to support new changes and service delivery or policy. I think we can go right back to the ARPA language and it's, it, it's supported and, and Barbara, help me out. There's a, a long phrase that sort of comes up again and again, the enabling community, the community to recover from the negative economic impact of COVID. It's something like that. But we, it's something that we've seen a lot of, a bunch of times. And I think we would use that phrasing for defining how the data collected would be used. And again, the great thing is we have this plan and we have the interim, interim final rule from Treasury that really outlines all of this. We're just plugging in stuff from the plan into this strategy.
Yeah, so maybe number two is the data that we will collect will be used to inform town policymakers of the greatest needs ARPA-driven or ARPA-appropriate with various groups in town. To use the data to inform the policymakers to the greatest degree, if you will. To put all the information you need in front of you to make informed ARPA-appropriate decisions on how to use the money. Right?
Yep. And so timelines. So Barbara, the first report is due end of October?
Yeah, I have to submit a report at the end of October telling them what we're doing, where we are. The money doesn't have to be obligated until the end of 2024.
Okay.
It has to be actually distributed from our bank account by 2026, I believe.
Obviously, we don't want to wait that long. We can, Survey Monkey has a lot of best practice guidance as far as how long you should have a survey out there for small communities, large communities, and between communities. I think it's sort of where, to a certain extent, will be reverse engineering with, you know, possibly, do we want to set a goal for when we want to be able to report back to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance? Do we want to say at, you know, here we are on September 8th. So do we want to say between writing, reviewing, editing survey questions, getting the tool out there? Do we leave it open for 30 days? Do we leave it open for 45 days? I think 60 days is way too long. And then what's our timeframe for taking that data and turning it into a nice, easily consumable report for Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen?
Absolutely. I think we should have a, a, a goal date, a target date. Yes, absolutely. And then afterwards, you know, give a notice about sharing the results once the debt, once the, you know, the deadline is, has passed.
Yeah, so Survey Monkey has, we have a paid subscription to Survey Monkey, the town does. And one of the great things about having this paid subscription is that you can take those, the results of your survey and through a couple of clicks, create visualized, easily consumable responses for, that are easily consumable by the public. Pie charts and bar graphs, you know, so you're not sending out something where people are looking at a spreadsheet of this many people responded to this question and that's not easily consumable by the public. So we should be able to turn around the data out to the public to share pretty quickly within, I would say, two weeks after the close, you know, the deadline of, of the survey. So do we want to, just throwing a date out?
I think a realistic timeline would be to get an initial survey out by the end of September. And I think the responses from that survey may give us indications as to which way we go from there. Or how many more surveys we may need, that kind of thing.
Yep.
But I think having a general overall goal of getting a report to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance by January seems reasonable.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I was going to say. So the, in theory, the December Board of Select, I mean, January Board of Selectmen meeting would be January 11. So that's a solid work week past the holidays. And I think I agree with Barbara. I think that would be, that gives us plenty of time to get these questions written in the next couple of weeks, get the survey live, have it be live for a month. And if we get to three weeks in and we only have, you know, and we'll do this more often during the course of the survey, if at the end of the first week, we have four responses, then we would need to send out another, you know, share it more out to the public. And then second week, we would review, how many responses do we have? We got a great pop from that, you know, second notice. We'll let it go for another week. If at week three, it's sort of scaled off and, and we're hoping for, you know, we could set a goal of 20% of the population. So that's 400 responses-ish response, no, less than that, 300 responses. Is that too much? Is that too little? I'm not really sure. But if we're not getting close to that goal by the end of the third week, we could say, you know what, we need to do a big push and we need to extend it out for another two weeks. So extend the deadline for another two weeks, give people a little bit more time. I think it's actually a good timeframe to release a survey because we're not in the holiday season yet. So I think this timing is kind of perfect at the end of the month.
I think there should be two surveys initially, immediately. One should be focused on the general public and the taxpayer, and the other one should be focused on the business. And when I say business, I mean all the business, the nonprofits, the profits, all the businesses in town. So that we can sort of create questions that will bring the same kind of information from each group. And I think that the surveys need to be on the town website, but I think that the business one should be directly solicited and emailed to the businesses.
Would, would it possible to combine these? You say business and, and taxpayer, would it be possible to combine the two groups together in, in one survey?
What would, what would be the benefit of that?
Well, I would think, well, in my opinion, if you combine the two together, then you may get a more. Then you may get a more um uh timely response. Whereas, you know, one group might be confused about the deadline and delay it, you know, just to. Kind of simplify things and have everyone submit the questionnaire uh on the same day. I mean, does that make sense to you?
Not really. I think people are going to submit the information when they. Have completed the questionnaire. And I think if we make the questionnaire specific to a business concern. It'll be easier for them to understand what we're asking. And if we make the other questionnaire. Uh, more specific to personal concerns, it'll it'll just make more sense to them. And that way we can compile it easier in these two different groups. I that's my opinion.
Yeah, and just thinking about the construction of a survey, if the obvious, if we did do it in one. There would be a fork in the road where people would have to choose, am I doing this? Am I? Filling out this survey as a business owner or am I filling it out as a? Member of the general public, so they would, they couldn't do, well, they could do both. In if it was in one survey, I think it might be um cleaner to do two surveys because then you, let's say I own a business in town. I could go and take the business owner survey and know I have my business hat on for this entire survey. It's clean. I know exactly what I'm gonna go and think about when I'm filling out the business owners survey. And if I'm a private citizen and I don't own a business, I know that I don't want anything to do with that survey. I'm good with that survey. I want this taxpayer. Resident um survey, so it might be cleaner to do it that way.
Yeah, no, the the only reason why I um I mentioned that is because. I myself, my approach to everything is to simplify things. And when you have everyone being on the same page. It just seems to me to make matters simple. You know, uh, and we we all want to um get the result out there. You know, as quickly as as we can. Because um, you know, don't want to lose any um any funding if something's not reported. In a timely way either.
And I think, Joe, now that you say that. I think you're convincing me that it might make sense to. Have one survey, so you fill out your demographic information. And then there's a point in the survey where it would say, and the instructions would have to be super clear, the instructions would say. Are you a biz, are you filling out this um survey as a business or are you filling out the survey as a resident? And so then the fork happens and they go off on either path. And if we, so now we're collecting one data set. But they're different questions, they're two pathways, but we're, I think, as far as you're, when when you said. Simplifying and making sure that it's fair to the public.
I think that doesn't simplify. I think that makes it way more complicated. Even when you collect the data back, eh, I mean, I think it and who you send it to. I think that it's much cleaner and easier to have a taxpayer survey. And a business organization survey. And the and the results will be cleaner as they come back. They will require less analysis. Which will save us time. And I don't see the difficulty in that. Because if you're only a taxpayer, you're not getting two surveys, you're only getting one. And if you're a business or nonprofit organization, you're not getting two surveys, you're only getting one. So I don't know, to me, this fork in the road with detailed um thing sounds way more complicated.
I agree. So, so let's go, we've we've done determining the timeline generally. Determine roles.
And you think end of September is enough time to do really good surveys?
Well, I think it's enough time for us to compile questions. And I think. Determining the roles and the responsibilities of the team members, one of the things I think we can do after today's meeting is. We can each come back to the next meeting with five questions, five business questions and five personal questions each. We'll review all the que, we'll send them to everybody before the meeting so everybody can see and and review and we can have a discussion. I really think. The faster we get it out there, the better off we're gonna be.
Yep, and I think having a target. Is good for, it's good for me. Cause it gives me something to focus on. And if we get to, you know, if we get to the next meeting, which is two weeks from now. And that's the twenty second. And we, you know, we get into an hour of reviewing. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty potentially questions. And we are not making headway. And we say, all right, we need to get through the rest of this. We've been at this for an hour and a half. We need to, you know, take a break, take a week off, and maybe we need to have a a meeting in between, but we're also gonna have to move this out a week. Or we can say, you know what, we need to knuckle down here and 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 really try to meet that thirtieth date. So I I think that keeping a deadline for us to get the survey out is a good thing if we. If we meet that deadline, then we're rock stars. If we don't meet that deadline, then we. We know that we have to keep working and and put our heads down. But it's it's sort of a soft deadline, but I think we should stay to the the thirtieth.
You absolutely think that um that's gonna be enough time than the thirtieth?
So I can, I can tonight, this weekend, put a shell together. That every survey gets the same stuff, no matter what. You always have your demographic information, you're gonna have your opening page, a set of instructions. I can start to flesh all that out. And send it, send that um draft to you all and you'll actually see the survey. And so at our next meeting, we can look at that shell and also address these questions. And then once the questions are. Um, decided on, then I just have to plug them in and decide, is this a ranking question? Is this a multi-choice question? Is that, you know, what style question? And they're all tempered. So it's relatively quick for it to go. And I know Barbara, you know, Survey Monkey pretty well, so Barbara and I can both work on. Getting it built.
It might be helpful when the committee members are thinking about what the questions would be. If they had some parameters as to what the kinds of questions would be. So. You just mentioned a ranking question or, and I didn't hear what your second thing was.
A multiple choice.
Multiple choice, right. So that's kind of a. A good thing to think of. Instead of just having blanket questions, how did this pandemic influence you? We could maybe help them a little bit by saying things like. Were you negatively economically impacted on a scale of one to ten and then you list? Or one to five or whatever.
Let them rank it, yeah. So I, there's a whole bunch of um knowledge-based stuff that Survey Monkey has. I can send you guys a couple of links to sort of get you in that place of. Survey Monkey and question types. And just in very general terms, the um. An open text answer, so a free choice, if you would, if you call it, or an essay answer. Is the least quantifiable. You can't, you can't quantify or analyze those kinds of questions. We do want to definitely. Give people the opportunity to have their absolute open. You know, mind dump of how they see what the needs are. But um by creating questions that we can analyze and that are quantifiable, that's gonna. Give the best information to the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen.
Well, I think that, I don't know, I'm thinking that the Survey Monkey. Can provide a lot of good data and a lot of answers. But part of me thinks it ought to be augmented by a series of. Focus groups with certain groups within the thing, within our community. Because um Survey Monkey will give you hard data. But it won't give you a sense of the emotional toll, the real feel. Of the community around these issues of COVID. So I think it would be interesting to set up a series of. Small focus groups with retailers where you sit around a table, just four or five people. And you probe this in a discussion. I think you get more out of people face to face. I think it's more Gene-like. I think it's more Kent-like. And I, I so I see the Survey Monkey as like hardcore data. And the focus groups as maybe a more fuzzy tool, but you could get more out of it.
Um, I'd like to comment on that. Um, okay, so now this Survey Monkey poll. Worst case scenario, say there is a of a a poor response, but. Five responses or or whatever. So therefore, some other uh option. Has to be provided to to get recommendations. A plan with a focus group that might be something that, in my opinion. Would be worth considering, but if that's the case, it just cannot be focused on. A business-centric group. It has to include other members of the community as well now. But that's an interesting idea. So um for the next meeting, could could there be more specific information? Provided on that?
Well, I could do a write-up on, like, I was thinking maybe there could be like. You know, five focus groups, one.
Like a stakeholder group.
Like five different ones and um. And I think it's really worth the time because I think that you, I really do think you get more information out of people. Face to face in a conversation and they feel more heard. Um, and more paid attention to. And it wouldn't have to be that many. It could be, you know. Parents who had um issues with their, you know. Issues related to learning from home and virtual classrooms and all of that. Could be retailers, it could be our nonprofits. Um, it could be taxpayer, a simple, you know, just. Regular people who don't own a business, but they pay taxes. You know, we could have like five of them, different categories and um. You know, we could, we could develop a sort of script for how it would go. But they're, they're more sort of free-flowing conversations. And if we captured um information that way and augment our Survey Monkey. I think that gives us the best of both worlds.
Yeah, and it would, I think it would give us sort of a deeper dive of the stakeholder groups.
Yeah, I think so, Jean. I think that, you know, we can, because if someone says something that you don't understand, you could. Ask a follow-up question, you know, and you can develop a bit of a conversation around it. And see other people's take.
So we're, just wanna stay focused, speaking of focusing. We're with spent about forty-five minutes. I know Barbie of your hand up. I just want to try to keep the meetings to an hour so that. Time, but go ahead, Barbette, Barbara, but I like where we're going with this.
Okay, so I'm in agreement with the focus group and I really think that once we send out this initial survey. That'll give us enough information, so it'll help us create these focus groups.
Yeah.
I think you're right about that.
Yep.
Yeah, and that'll help us. The surveys will give us enough information so that we say, oh, we need more information on this topic or we need to understand this. Information better. And so I think that will work, but I still think it's gonna be. Not at the same time, we're gonna have to do the survey first and then the focus group.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense to me.
So the only other question I really want to touch base on today is. How are we going to get a distribution list? Now, I do know that. We have a distribution mechanism for emergency management. That has a lot of individual emails in it, so we might be able to utilize that. But as far as the business owner goes, the business owner may not necessarily be a Kent resident. And that will not preclude that business owner from being eligible for these ARPA funds from Kent.
Right.
So somehow we need to come up with a mechanism to capture the business owners in town.
So we actually, when they um, so Demis populated our Everbridge database, which is our emergency notification database. And it populates it with the white pages, which is probably the biggest and widest. I would need to do, I would need to take a look at how many email addresses we have. Um, it's mostly phone numbers. For the businesses at this point.
So would we, and I'm just thinking out loud, maybe. Or could we, through Everbridge, send out like a mass phone message?
Yes.
He says, there is a survey, it's available on the town website. Please access the town website and take this survey, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, yes.
That way we wouldn't be emailing people directly and everybody in town would get the phone call.
Right, it's, it, yes, it is definitely gonna give us the biggest reach.
Okay, sounds good.
So, um, we have timelines.
I assume this, I was thinking Deb DeVoe may be a good source of data also. Because even if a business owner does not live in Kent, they must pay some taxes in Kent, right?
Well, they they do file personal property tax returns, so we could get that list from the assessor. Or the tax collector.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they collect.
Those would be mailing addresses, those wouldn't be emails and phone numbers.
Right. I'll take a look at Everbridge. Um, I'm sure that that's gonna be the widest. That's how we'll make the widest um sweep.
Okay, for the sake of the minutes and because I know you guys have to go. Probably determining roles and responsibility and assigning tasks should wait until we have all the members here.
Well, I think for this meeting, we can definitely, um, one of the homework items can be. What Barbara mentioned come with five questions that you. Might want in the survey. So that could be a homework item for everybody.
Yes, and I'll do the minutes and I will also do a little. Sort of write-up on um focus groups.
Okay.
Like how I think it could work and um blah, blah.
Okay.
And then assigning tasks based on skills and available resources, I would say. Focus groups would be Patricia.
I think that assigning tasks though is really an ongoing thing, because our tasks are gonna keep happening.
Yes, for sure.
I think we can all just agree at this point that we'll volunteer for what we're most comfortable with. And if nobody volunteers, then things will get assigned.
And somebody will get voluntold.
If 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 I could speak for a minute, um, yeah, uh, one thing uh that we we did not talk about was infrastructure. This is something that um. I would like to see uh some of the funds spent on, and I also have been asked. About this from others also as to if that's going to be covered also. So I would volunteer to um to cover that topic.
Well, I think that would definitely be. Part of your um, as all of our homework assignments, you want to make sure that you cover. Questions that would address infrastructure for sure.
Absolutely, yep.
And then identifying how decisions will be made. I think we're, we're talking about group dynamic at this. And then identifying how decisions will be made. I think we're, we're talking about group dynamic at this point. So we're having, it's mostly discussion-based.
It's important to understand and remember always, and maybe we need to put this on our agenda as part of the, the charge, is that the funding is intended to address the economic hardship caused by COVID. So infrastructure, and we only have a finite set of funding. So infrastructure is really something that the municipality would provide on a regular basis as part of our service to our community. And I'm not sure how we could channel any of the funding into infrastructure and say that it was a, a result of the hardship from our COVID situation.
Well, my, my understanding is that any, any hardship that was caused by the, by the pandemic, it has to be proven through financial documents and so forth. Am I correct on that or, or not?
Generally, yes. And so to augment that point, the town cannot claim that we've had any economic hardship, the municipality proper. Our budget-
The only way that I could see infrastructure as fitting into this is broadband and enough parents, children suffered or had a less than fulfilling academic year because they didn't have regular reliable access to internet. That's the only way that I could see a possible connection.
But when you read the interim final rule, there's criteria that specifically addresses what qualifies under those guidelines.
Right.
Has to do with BPS, bits per minute or whatever it is.
Per second.
Bits per second. So it's very technical. And it's not as simple as providing internet service to an individual household.
Right.
So I think these are all good for, as we're working through creating our five questions that we're gonna come back to the table with. And important, everybody's got the interim final rule. Everybody's got that ARPA toolkit. If you don't have it, just email the group, which is ARPA committee. And send out an ask and Barbara and I can probably have it back within a couple of minutes. Barbara will probably beat me every time.
Okay. Well, just one funny story before we're ending. I have a, I know a woman who's on the Goshen Democratic Town Committee and is also on their ARPA committee. And they already decided that they want to spend this money on getting rid of weeds at Tyler Lake and some other lake in, in Goshen. Not the big one, not Woodridge, Tyler and some other one. And when she told me that, I thought, that doesn't really seem to fit the bill. Getting rid of weeds at a lake. So I think we're doing better than some towns in following correct procedures.
And I think Connie will bring that to the forefront, the conservation piece and the recreation piece. That's where that would intersect.
Actually, what Patricia was just saying, that actually does apply because that is water conservation. And, and I, I have read that as a use of the funds. It's, you know, water conserv, number one, purifying the water in, in a body of water such as like, for example, in Kent, that could, that could apply to hot hatch pond. So I mean, it's not as far-fetched an idea as, as it may seem.
Interesting.
Yeah, interesting. On its face, I thought, oh, what does that have to do with economic hardship caused by COVID?
Yeah. Yeah. And I think the more we start to sort of pay attention to this in our own individual news feeds, our own individual, you know, however we consume news content, we're gonna, you know, the six of us are gonna all of a sudden, you know, be coming back to the meeting saying, hey, did you know, I just heard a rural, small rural town in New York State that is spending millions of dollars to put in a baseball stadium? And they're using their ARPA and somehow they've fit that peg in that hole. So I think it's gonna be great to, you know, now that we're all sort of focused on that and this is our, the glasses that we're looking through. It'll, that sharing, I think, is, is a good thing for sure. And maybe we'll add that as a standing item on our agenda, just a brief info share if anybody has from time to time. Barbara.
The conservation piece, from my interpretation, reading the interim final rule really is very closely connected to underserved portions of your community. So clean water and clean sewage and that sort of thing would be, would have to be focused on some area of our community that is underserved currently. From my interpretation.
Yeah, that sounds like it would make sense.
That makes sense. And we probably don't have any of those communities. Maybe the scattered.
Do, right. I was just gonna say, I think the, the Indian tribe, tribal nation there or whatever they're called. I don't, hope I'm politically correct. I would think they would probably-
Native Americans, I think, is the, is the term that, that's preferable. I don't know.
So if they didn't have clean drinking water, that kind of thing, then this would be an acceptable use of the ARPA funds to
Got it.
make sure they had it.
Yeah.
Would, would, not, not to get off the track, but would that make a difference? Because this Indian tribe, are they recognized or not?
They're state-recognized. They're not federally recognized yet. So they're not-
They're still members of our community. So I think if, if we ended up utilizing some of the ARPA money to help them with clean drinking water, that would be absolutely acceptable.
Right. They're not a sovereign nation because they don't have the federal recognition.
Yeah, but Barbara is right. They're members of our community and have that forever.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think we all know the selecting a method or tool for conducting a needs assessment. We sort of covered that. So I think we're good to wrap up for today. And Patricia, I'll send you this developer's team strategy.
I wrote it down. You don't need to. I wrote it down.
Okay. Okay. Great. So our next meeting will be, I think I put it on the agenda, the 22nd, September 22nd. Same bat channel, same bat time. From this seat on the 8th at 5:30, it looks like we will continue to have these meetings via Zoom. I, you know, life is dynamic. It continues to be dynamic.
I think that's a little far away. I think we should be at least distributing questions to the members of the team before that.
Okay. Do you want to have a meeting on, do you want to set a meeting for next Wednesday? Do you want to, until we get the survey out, do we want to meet weekly? Does that make sense?
It does to me.
Yeah, it kind of does to me too.
Does it have to be on a Wednesday?
Well, I'm here Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon or Friday. So it needs to be during that period.
Wednesday's fine with me, but what I'm saying is that if it's not fine for everybody, would it be possible to have it on another day just so everybody can, can be at the meeting?
Yeah, we can, I can send out a, just a quick ask to the, the whole committee. Just to see what an optimal, yeah, that's what I was just thinking. So I can do that as soon as we hang up and I'll get that out to everybody. So we can figure out another time for next week and then going forward. It'd be good to have it the same.
And if, but, but for now, the next meeting will be Wednesday, September 15th at 4:30.
Right.
Yes.
Unless people request otherwise.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Got it.
Alrighty. Thanks, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Really, really productive.
I think it was. I think it was a good productive meeting.
Yeah. Super. All right. Have a good afternoon. Careful in the rain tomorrow.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a nice evening. Bye.